Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, City Manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District 1, Glenn Davis, District 2, Bruce Huff, District 3, Toya Tucker, District 4, Charmaine Crabbe, District 5, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim, and District 6, Mimi Woodson, District 7, Walker Garrett, District 8, Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor, John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor, Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
And welcome to the November 16th City Council meeting. We're delighted to have you with us as we do the business of the people of Muskogee County. And we're going to begin, as we always do, by asking God's presence. And we've got President of the IMA here, Reverend Adrian Chester of Greater Bellwood Baptist Church. Pastor Chester, welcome, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. God, our help in ages past, you've been our hope for years to come. You've also been our shelter from life's stormy blast, and you are our eternal home. God, we come this evening asking your blessing and your presence upon this meeting. As those who have been elected by the people to serve you by serving your people, make decisions that will impact all persons here in Columbus, Georgia. We ask now that you give them wisdom to be able to do your will in this world. It's in the strong but sweet name of Jesus we do pray. And we all said, amen.
Amen. Reverend Chester, thank you, sir. And please thank your congregation for sharing you with us. And on a side note, we want to thank you for the leadership you provide in so many areas of this community. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, and if you would, please stand as you're able and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Council, you have the minutes from the November 9th meeting in front of you. Motion approved from Counselor Tucker and second from Counselor House. Any discussion or any edits? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, they are approved. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to skip the COVID-19 update. I'll give you a short one in a few moments. We've got some people in the audience tonight that I'm really looking forward to recognizing. First, I'd like to invite, we're pleased to have Mr. D.L. Jordan here. And I'm going to invite Reverend Jimmy Elder to the podium to assist us in an announcement and also a presentation. Welcome, Jimmy.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Several years ago, we saw a magnanimous gift given to Columbus State University by D.L. Jordan. The idea was to endow a chair and to provide funding that this professor will talk to you about in just a second. It is an absolutely wonderful gift that was given. And so part of it was to endow a chair. And we had to find a professor who would fill that chair. And I was privileged to be on that search committee. And we went as far as all over the country in a national search. And we found the best person possible at Georgia College and State University in Milledgeville. He's Dr. Alan G., and the minute we saw him as a search committee, we were absolutely overwhelmed. And it was one of those, you know, call in the dogs, the hunt is over moments. We knew that he was the person that we needed. And I'm delighted to introduce him to you tonight. He occupies the chair, and he is a D.L. Jordan endowed professor at Columbus State University. Will you join me in welcoming Dr. Alan G.?
Thank you, Jimmy. To the City Council and Mayor Henderson, it is my pleasure to speak to you today. Fearfully and wonderfully made, a novel by Columbus native Donald L. Jordan was published this year by Negative Capability Press, one of the South's most distinguished independent literary presses. The novel takes us back to mid-century Columbus, told from the point of view of 10-year-old Skeeter Harding who attends the Winton School. The first-person narrator evokes childhood with admirable honesty, confronting poverty and extolling hard work, reminding us of true innocence and generosity. And the novel is, in its own special way, a unique tribute to Columbus. After reading the novel and interviewing Donald L. Jordan for The Columbus Site about his writing and philanthropy, editor Carrie Beth Wallace thought Mr. Jordan's novel would be a great first book to be cited as a book for Columbus for 2021. I certainly agreed. This is the beginning of what we anticipate will be a fine tradition. Each year from this point on, The Columbus Site will designate a book for Columbus to promote our city's writers and to continue to acknowledge our city's rich literary history. At Columbus State University, Mr. Jordan has created an endowment which has led to the formation of the Columbus State University Press, as well as initiating service trips to impoverished countries and creating a professorship. So, as the Donald L. Jordan endowed professor of creative writing at Columbus State University, I'm very pleased to be able to recognize Mr. Jordan for his achievement and to proclaim Fearfully and Wonderfully Made as a book for Columbus for 2021. Congratulations, Donald.
Mr. Mayor and members of Council, thank you for having us tonight. I hope this is just the beginning. My book happens to be the inaugural book of the year, but we hope to do more of this every year. And we hope that most of the books they don't recognize as the Columbus Book of the Year will be written by Columbus writers. We do have a lot of goodness here. Here in Columbus, we recognize arts. We recognize music. It's been my dream for many years to recognize good literary writing. Part of our mission with Columbus State University and through CSU is to find, promote, and publish writers who honor the traditional values of responsibility, gratitude, generosity, love, and faith. And those writers who can meet that goal, hopefully will receive the award for the year. They'll be able to be our Columbus Book of the Year and will be able indeed to express some of those moral values that we treasure so much. I just want to thank you for recognizing this one tonight. It's just the beginning. Fearfully and Wonderfully Made is about a little 10-year-old in one school, and it is the oldest continuously operating school in the state of Georgia. And I don't know how many of you went there, but if you didn't go, you might need to go back and get an education. But thank you so much for recognizing.
Well, Mr. Jordan, before you leave the podium, let me just say personally, thank you for what you've done throughout this community and helping to shape Columbus into what it is today. And I got to tell you, I have enjoyed reading your book. It is so much fun. It's such a fun read because of the way you have interwoven all of the locations in Columbus. So it makes you feel like you're really a part of the story. And so thank you for sharing. I'm going to turn the mic over to Mayor Pro Tim Gary Allen, who has a proclamation to read in your honor, sir.
So don't go anywhere, D.L. Wait just a minute. Mayor and Council, many of us have the opportunity in life to see someone who gives back. And I want to know that D.L. Jordan is one of those individuals. He not only has improved the lives for many people in Columbus, Georgia, but literally around the world. He has sponsored and helped drill wells in foreign countries so that people don't have to walk so far to get water. And so his outreach has blessed so many lives. And today, we're honoring him for his literary work and his selfless giving to Columbus. My preacher, Sunday, shared a poem with us that reminded me of D.L., and it's a short poem by Miss Will Allen Drumgoogol. So if you'll indulge me just a minute. It's called "The Bridge Builder." An old man going a lone highway came in the evening, cold and gray, to a chasm vast, both deep and wide, through which was flowing a sullen tide. The old man crossed in the twilight dim; the swollen stream was naught to him; but he stopped when safe on the farther side and built a bridge to span the tide. Old man set a fellow pilgrim near: "You're wasting your strength and labor here. Your journey will end with a closing day; you will never again pass this way. You've crossed the chasm deep and wide; why build you this bridge at eventide?" The laborer lifted his old gray head: "Good friend, in the path I have come," he said. "There followeth after me today a youth whose feet must pass this way; this chasm which has naught to me. To that young man may a pitfall be. He too must cross in the twilight dim. Good friend, I'm building this bridge for him." And I can't begin to tell you all the things D.L. has done in his life that have helped so many people. But through this proclamation, sharing this and publishing it for you, maybe we can shed some light on that. And the proclamation reads as follows, and it's a privilege to publish it today. Whereas Donald L. Jordan, native of Columbus, Georgia, graduated from Columbus High School. Later, he took over his father's struggling hardware business and started a fence company. And whereas by the age of 18, he had earned enough money to build his parents a new house, he also expanded the D.L. Jordan Company into painting, roofing, remodeling, and general contracting. And whereas at a young age, Mr. Jordan also made time to express his love of literature by becoming a writer and a novelist. At the age of 21, D.L. used the pen name Leroy Donald to write his first novel, a Western titled Trail to La Meta, published by Thomas Bergeri and Company. He was a writer for the Alfred Hitchcock's Mystery Magazine. He wrote Through Creation, A Letter, and Happy Lightning are among his two dozen novels. And whereas his most recent novel, Fearfully and Wonderfully Made, is about the struggles of a young boy growing up in Columbus, Georgia, who is lost between his hard-knock childhood and the mysteries of a larger world. And whereas in 2016, D.L. Jordan gifted $3 million to Columbus State University in order to establish an endowment for fostering the art of writing. And whereas his generous gift is the largest ever made to the university's College of Letters and Sciences and one of the largest in the institution's 58-year history. And whereas D.L. Jordan hopes his endowment helps produce a Pulitzer Prize-winning writer from Columbus State University. And whereas D.L. Jordan's book, Fearfully and Wonderfully Made, has been selected as the first book of the year at Columbus State University, an award which will be made annually. And whereas the mayor of Columbus, Georgia, Columbus Council, and all the citizens of Columbus, Georgia congratulate and celebrate the accomplishments and generosity of Donald L. Jordan on this special occasion. Now therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia does hereby proclaim Fearfully and Wonderfully Made as the Columbus State University 2021 Book of the Year and hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 16, 2021, as Donald L. Jordan Day.
Now, Mr. Jordan, there are a few others that want to make comments. I think Counselor John House.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jordan, I just wanted you to know that I really enjoyed the book. It brought back a lot of memories I had from a few years ago and other things that I'd heard. So thank you for writing it and for giving the rest of us the opportunity to read it.
Mr. Jordan, we appreciate it very much. We've got a few copies of the proclamation. And Mayor Pro Tim is going to bring them out there to you, sir, keep you from having to come through.
By the way, I apologize for letting this sore foot not age.
No, sir. We're delighted to have you in chambers this evening. And Dr. G., thank you, sir, for what you do. This is, I think, it's an incredibly well-selected read for the inaugural Columbus Book of the Year. All right, next, we have another very significant presentation to make. And I'm going to call to the podium the State Commander Mark Shreve from the American Legion. And anybody from, I think, who is here with him, Post 35, Commander Stringer, Lakeisha Stringer. And I'm also going to call up Corporal Samantha Phillips from the Columbus Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and distinguished guests. I have the privilege today of honoring one of your finest here in Columbus, Georgia. And the American Legion, we love our law and order. We love our folks in uniform. And we want to recognize Corporal Samantha Phillips. So without further ado, the American Legion and the American Legion Department of Georgia presents this certificate to Corporal Samantha Phillips in recognition of the outstanding attributes demonstrated leading to the awarding of the American Legion Silver Medal for Outstanding Heroism, presented by the American Legion Department of Georgia and Post 35 Commander Lakeisha D. Stringer. We love that she's in the business of saving lives. And this award for heroism is for her actions in saving the lives of two children in our community.
Sometimes Commander, just put it on there and just slap it one time in a little step.
She's wearing body armor, so she'll be okay. Commander Shreve, let us say, sir, that we're pleased to have you in Columbus, Georgia, and we thank you for recognizing Corporal Phillips. You know, our heroes here, and I see Chief Blackman coming up, sir, if you would come to the podium as well. Our heroes here in law enforcement and first responders, it's impossible to thank them enough. And it is completely correct and right that we recognize them. And I guarantee you, the corporal's going to tell us she's just doing her job. And I promise you, not another soul in here would have been able to accomplish those feats and do that job the way she did it. We also have, before I embarrass her even more by asking her safe few words, we have a proclamation. Counselor House, if you'd hit your light, and we'll...
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's certainly an honor on my part to be able to read this proclamation. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress on September 16, 1919, as a wartime veterans organization based on four pillars: Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth. And whereas Corporal Samantha Phillips heroically saved the lives of two children from near-death experiences on two separate occasions. And whereas Corporal Samantha Phillips displayed courage without hesitation of the three of the four American Legion pillars: Americanism, Children and Youth, and National Security. And whereas the courageous efforts of one heroic human being saved two lives. And whereas Corporal Samantha Phillips continues to educate and train while showcasing the professionalism, initiative, dedication, and motivation needed to provide our community with the passion and love needed to improve the quality of life for all residents of the Chattahoochee Valley. And whereas all citizens of Columbus, Georgia, and employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government recognize and appreciate the contributions made to the public good by this outstanding employee. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 16, 2021, as Corporal Samantha Phillips Day.
I'm going to ask our police chief, Freddie Blackman, if he'd like to say a few, make a few comments.
Well, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and Council members, just want to say, not to take away from Corporal Phillips, I know she'll be coming forward, but she's the example of what we have at the Columbus Police Department. What Corporal Phillips did was really extraordinary work. And it's something that she has that demeanor where she just took it in stride. Often times, you hear me say that the men and women of the Columbus Police Department run in two-harm's-way while others run away from harm's-way into a safe place. She stepped into action. She didn't run away from that opportunity to save the lives of those children. She could have went another way, but she didn't. That was not her DNA. That was not her demeanor. She went to make a difference, and the difference she made. And so I join each of you with congratulating Corporal Phillips for the good work that she did and that she continues to do as she represents the Columbus Police Department, herself and the family, and the city of Columbus in a very favorable way. Congratulations to you.
Corporal Phillips, you make some comments?
I want to thank the City Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Isaiah Hughley, City Manager. Thanks to American Legion. I appreciate this award from the guys. I want to thank the Columbus Police Department for allowing me to represent them and also the citizens of Columbus. Mayor took the words right out of my mouth. I'm just doing my job.
I told you.
I never think about whether I want to save someone's life or anything like that. It's just in me to just take action when something's going on. I would hate to see anyone suffer, and I would love for someone to do the same for my family as well. Thank you.
Corporal. Well, ma'am, let me say, you were just doing your job. We thank you for the way you do your job. We are immensely proud of you and thank you for what you do every day. Counselor Huff? Not yet.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, Corporal Phillips. Affectionately known as Sam. But today, Corporal Phillips. Congratulations to you. Thank you for all that you do for the city. I've had the joy of being around you now my entire career, sitting here. And you've given me advice. You and your partners have given me a lot of advice from the now chief on down to you and everybody else. So I appreciate all you do. Sometimes I see things I don't understand, so I ask the question. And you make it simple for me. So thank you for all you do. It's always amazed me since the day I met you because you've done so many different things. And the first time I saw you around the motor squad, that really got my attention. And you made it look easy. So thank you so much. If there's anything I can ever do for you, let me know. Congratulations again.
Thank you, sir.
One last thing I'd like to do because Post 35 does so much here in Columbus, and we are so grateful to you for honoring one of our own. I'd like y'all to introduce yourselves so that the folks at home know who the members of Post 35 are.
My name is Lakeisha Stringer. I'm the commander of American Legion Post 35.
I'm John Hitchcock, last year's past commander of American Legion Post 35.
I'm Sam Nelson, the chairman of the Chattahoochee Valley Veterans Council and also the chaplain at Post 35 and the sergeant-at-arms at District 3. So I can't tell you how much I appreciate y'all letting us do this for this officer. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Dykes, and I am commander of EDAR, Rousa, American Legion, Post 333.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Carpenter. I'm Third District Commander and member of Post 267.
Thank you very much. And again, Commander Shreve, thank you, sir, for being here to bestow this honor on Corporal Phillips. Thank y'all. Yeah. Oh, Corporal Phillips, I forgot one thing. You need to come up here and get your proclamation. We've actually got a couple for you from one another. I'll tell you, it's a good day when we can recognize one of our police officers or law enforcement officers for what they do on a regular basis. Very quickly, I did want to make one quick comment on the pandemic, on COVID, mainly because we've heard in the national news about some states are seeing an increase in numbers. We're not seeing that yet here in Columbus. We anticipate that there will probably be some small, minimal surge as we get into the holidays and people gather together inside. But as of right now, our numbers continue to drop. The key metric that we use is the number of cases per 100,000 individuals over a two-week period. That continues to decline. There are currently under 30 patients in our hospitals that have been diagnosed with COVID. That's an incredibly good sign. That is what we look for to determine how significant the virus is still making itself felt throughout our community. So the vaccinations continue to increase. We have our public safety who are going to get their boosters. I think our EMA director, our deputy director, as well as DPH is working with our area hospitals on getting those done. Most adults now are eligible for their booster. And we're seeing folks begin to trickle back in to get those. Our youngsters in our communities are beginning to get vaccinated, which allows us to perhaps get back to all of the freedoms we had prior to this pandemic moving in as we continue to see those vaccinations increase. So again, so much of the success that we have had with regards to COVID-19, and we've said this before, but it's kept Columbus a footnote and off the headlines. That credit belongs with the people of this community who have looked after one another as well as themselves. So I just commend and thank you for doing that. Next up, our chief judge, Gil McBride, is here for an item on the City Attorney, City Manager's agenda, item five. And there may be questions. I see our Superior Court Clerk is here as well. So if Council will indulge us, we'll go ahead and pull that up and allow the judge to answer any questions. And I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And item number five on my agenda. Governor Brian Kemp has allocated up to $110 million in ARP, state fiscal recovery funds, to address backlogs of court cases, prioritizing cases involving serious violent felonies. The state, in conjunction with the Judicial Council of Georgia and its administrative office of the courts, will administer up to $96 million in grants to authorized cases of court prosecutors and related agencies. And so the judge is here, and the clerk of Superior Court, Danielle Fortea, she's here. And we're asking your approval to apply, and if awarded, accept ARP state fiscal recovery funds awarded to the Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit to address backlog of court cases caused by the pandemic. to address backlog of court cases caused by the pandemic. And so that is the request this evening.
All right, while I was gone, there's a motion and a second. Counselor Tucker made the motion, a second from Counsel Woodson. Is there any discussion on Item Five? All right, hearing none. We've, we've got it queued. Counsel, please enter your votes. All right. Corporal Woodson, that's it? We got it. It's passed. Does anybody have any questions of the judge or the clerk? Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you for leadership and pursuing this as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hughley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, I guess we're on your agenda now.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We've got a pretty short business agenda tonight. The first item up is zoning ordinance, second reading, property at 2019 Warm Springs Road. There are six conditions in the ordinance now since it was amended last week, and it is ready for action tonight.
All right, there's a motion from Mayor Pro Tem to deny, and a second from, I thought I've heard Counsel Davis. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. If you'd queue it. A vote in favor of the motion is to deny the petition. And the motion passes. It is denied.
All right, the mayor said that item is denied. Second item up for a vote is the Old Town zoning petition at 3294 Confetti Blush Drive.
All right, there's a motion and a motion to approve from Counsel Davis, and I heard a second from Counsel Crabbe. Any discussion to this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, oh, we can queue your votes. I'm sorry. Keep forgetting that, Bruce. I apologize. All right, and that's approved. And I, we, I went, I missed Counsel Tucker. She had a question after the last vote. Hang on just a second. We'll get. There you go.
It was, it was from a conversation that we had. Counselor Barnes called me prior to the meeting and asked if he'd be added to that study committee we're gonna have in reference to the, I think, convenience stores and lotto lounges.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that's just something we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just us.
So, but it, it prompted me to say something.
Sure, no problem. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Attorney?
Okay, Item Three, Mayor, is a second reading on the Animal Services Division and the changes for animal control.
All right, there's a motion to approve and seconded, I heard motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel House. Any discussion? And I guess it should be noted, this is simply enabling legislation to remind people this is not to award a, a contract or anything just yet. So please queue it, Bruce. Counselors, please enter your votes. All right, and that's approved.
Okay, and then the last item we had, Mayor, is a formal resolution declaring results of the election held on November 2nd, 2021. This is for the record and bond financing coming up.
A motion approved from Counsel Woodson and a second from Counsel Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue the vote, and Counselors, you may enter yours. All right, and that's approved.
That passes. That's all we had listed tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to the public agenda. Reminded that the public agenda, the individuals have five minutes, and the, the timer is broken, so Ms. LeDenny, what I, it's not broken, but the, the notice is, so at one minute, I'll try to let you wait. But if you would, come and, and, and just state your name and your, your residence, and we'll, I'll start it after you get through that.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Lee Denny. My residence is 2440 Diane Avenue in Oakland Park, South Columbus. And here's my concern. I was here when they presented about the eviction ordinance. And although I think it is a good idea, at the same time, I think we're not looking at maybe some of the consequences that happened thereafter. Now, before I get started, I want to make sure that when I'm talking about landlords, I'm not talking about the ones who take care of their tenants. I'm not talking about the ones who take care of the properties, you know, who do everything above board. When I'm talking about tenants, I'm not talking about the ones who trash properties. I'm not talking about the ones who let grass get overgrown and so forth. I'm talking about tenants who've actually paid rent through more barriers than just the pandemic. I actually left from a house on the way to here with another party that is dealing with a different landlord from the one I'm accustomed to. When you look at these evictions and you look at all the debris and the bulk waste and everything, have you asked yourselves, why is this coming to be? Why are so many people being evicted? Some of these evictions have commonalities. Some of these evictions are predatory landlords, ones who use retaliatory practices against their tenants when they call code enforcement. I have one currently that is now having to deal with hundreds of dollars added to the rent on top of rent that was already raised when they called code enforcement the first time. This is an ongoing problem with a specific landlord. I know we're gonna have a meeting eventually. But I just wanted to address Counsel as well. It's not just the mayor. It's Counsel members here, including ones like Woodson in our county, in our, in our district. We have a lot of it. We have a lot of it. The other thing that I'm coming into constant contact with is disposessory evictions warrants that are taken out after partial payment. They're getting caught in court multiple times, multiple offenses. This is a pattern of behavior when you're dealing with predatory landlords. Why are we not addressing it? If I was a citizen and I were to call 911, which I know better because I'm a former dispatcher, and I report a false crime, or I call to harass a neighbor, I would be put in jail. I would be served fines. Why are we not doing that with the ones who consistently file disposessory warrants after receiving payment or partial payment? Why are we not addressing that? I have one going to court tomorrow with the other landlord, and they actually have it on their ledger, on their records, that they are receiving partial payments followed by a disposessory fee because that's when they took the warrant. And the warrant was taken out after a partial payment was received for that month. Their excuse is, is they haven't caught up their late fees. Their other excuses are they haven't recovered their repair fees. I'm sorry, I thought if I owned property and I rented it out and it was of no fault of the tenant, I'm responsible. Me, the landlord, would be responsible, not the tenant who's already in financial crisis. I think we also need to work a little bit more on our citizens who are in financial crisis because many aren't aware of the different programs we have, like with Urban League, Salvation Army. There's, there's so many to name. And I do bring this up towards the tenants when we're dealing with these. Let's go ahead and get a plan going. With some of them, you cannot be defaulted one day. One day. They are there at the sheriff's office beating the clerks to the offices. I have a problem with that because it's the same ones. Again, this is not the landlord to take care of their people. These are not the ones who came out of their pockets to make sure that everything was covered. And these are not the tenants who are trashing property and just purposely not paying rent. We've really got to take care of this, y'all. Counsel, Mayor, everyone, it's gotta stop. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, Counselor, hang on just a second. Counselor Woodson?
No, I had a question for the City Attorney. I was not, Ms. Jennifer, I was not aware of what was going on until, you know, you brought it to our attention today. And I'm pretty sure many of us around here are in shock to hear what you were saying. But that has to, I, I guess, Clifton, how can we, you know, how can we get involved to see what's going on? And if we have ordinances or policy in place to be able to stop that practice that's going on? I, Ms. Jennifer, this is new to me, so I don't know. So I have to ask those questions. And we might not get an answer today, but we'll need to follow up on it.
We'll have to follow up on it. We're not aware of any practice that she mentioned, so.
I found several loopholes. I know some are legal loopholes. I'm still interested in that. The Warrens, the special ed, and everything like that wasn't assigned. So this is all new. It's just how neighbors come to me. Neighbors that are going homeless, they'll embark, going homeless then during the time of year, during the time of year where things get more dangerous. It's the holiday season that doesn't want to bring more buzzing in.
Could you just give me a call to educate me a little bit more? And then I can follow up because, you know, I can't answer you because I don't know, I'm not educated on the issue. And this is the first time I've heard it, and I'm in shock to hear it. So just, if you can give me a call, let's get together and you can educate me, and then I can follow up on it, too. Thank you.
All right, hey, Counsel Crabbe? Hang on. Turned me off.
Hey, Jennifer, I'm, I am a property manager and I am a Realtor. And so I would love to sit down and talk to you and see if there's something internally that we can do, like through the National Association of Realtors, or, well, more the Georgia Association of Realtors, and see if maybe we can go in that direction also.
All right, and I think we're arranging a time for us to meet. All right, and I'll, I'll see.
When you arrange that time to meet.
No. Yeah, well, I'm just kidding. We'll do that. Yeah, we'll do that. That's fine.
And essentially, I have some questions, too. I think that'd be great if you could.
Sure.
And then we all meet with you. That sounds, that sounds completely, that sounds great.
All right. Thank you. All right, next is Mr. Olson. He's out. Mr. Olson left us. Okay. All right, well, we'll move on, Mr. City Manager, to your agenda. Hey, Arson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first three items are DCA application grants for Feed in the Valley.
All right, is that a motion approved, the first three? One, two, and three. All right, there's a motion approved, Items One, Two, and Three on the City Manager's Agenda. Any discussion? There's a second as well. I'm sorry, the second was Counsel Woodson. All right, to the motion, Counsel Tucker? Okay, if, can we queue that for all three of them, Bruce? Or we just need to take a voice vote? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, they are approved. Hold on just a second. Counselor Tucker?
I did want to mention while we was at ACCG, it was several counties that had received their grant, and they had their big check. I know Bruce probably saw him walking around with the check. So when we do, it was, this right here matters because we, I didn't know that we were, even though we're in Columbus, we, we have food deserts, even in our area. So this is extremely important. So when it does get approved, can you bring it back? So just to let us know the status once it's approved, if we do get approved.
And, and because this is significant, Mr. City Manager, if you would, would you walk through these three items to outline these grants? And I'm gonna ask Mr. Shepherd, if he has anything he'd like to add, he can come to the podium.
Sure, Mayor. Item number one is to apply for a grant in the amount of $3.1 million. The grant could provide, of course, up to the $3.1 million to expand the facilities of Feed in the Valley located on 6744 Flat Rock Road in Midland. The expansion will include new construction of warehouse space that will allow for an expected increase in service provision across the city and surrounding communities. And then the number two is to, requesting to comply with the matching fund requirement of the grant, a grant in the amount of $4.1 million. It's a 25% match, a million dollars in matching funds to be contributed to the project. The match will be met through a large unrestricted gift Feed in the Valley received late 2020. And then the third one was just to comply with the continuous use policy, ongoing operations and maintenance plan, matching funds. DCA, through this grant, would require that they adhere to DCA's continued use policy for a period of 10 years. And they would commit to that. And Feed in the Valley will be responsible for adhering to that continuous use policy, ongoing operations and maintenance plan. And those are the three things related to the grants and opportunities that we have in partnership with Feed in the Valley.
Mr. Shepherd, do you have any comments you want to make?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'm members of City Council. A tremendous opportunity for us, for this grant. Total project for our expansion is about $4.1 million is what this is saying. The DCA is offering to pay for 75% of it if we agree to raise the, the rest of that, which we already have. And, and the continuous use is to say that we're gonna remain on the property for 10 years. And trust me, after I get through building this one, I'm not going anywhere, so. But it's a tremendous increase in capacity. 100% increase, 1,000 pallet spots of dry storage, a 50% increase in cold storage for, for healthy lean meats, another 220 pallet spots worth, so. And an all-new volunteer center's air-conditioned. It's just a tremendous opportunity to increase the impact on our community and to have our community to help us to come and volunteer and, and get involved in, in what we're doing. So we appreciate that opportunity very much.
Well, we appreciate what you do. And you may, not to put you on the spot, but you might want to share with Counsel, just let them know the increase in the pounds of food that you've distributed this year versus last year.
Sure. Last fiscal year completed about 10 and a half million pounds. This past year, almost 16 million. So about an extra 5 million pounds. We saw a 53% increase in demand, and, and we, we met that increase during the pandemic.
We're awfully proud of the work y'all do, and we thank you for serving this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Woodson?
I just want to compliment Feed the Valley on, on their operations. I'm there quite often with the community warriors. I'm under Cenito. I try not to say I'm there. But I can tell you that the facility will be very much blessed by this grant. It's well-needed. And, you know, I appreciate the time that we spend in there. They treat us like royal kings and queens, and they feed us. And we pack them boxes, and it's like an assembly. I feel like I'm in a factory working. But it's such a pleasure to see how the staff is very friendly and very grateful, and it's just very rewarding. And, and I tell anybody, even our Counsel members, if you ever hear the need that they need packers go, it's very rewarding. You will be so pleased to see them pallets of food that's going out into our community. It's just really very rewarding. And so thank you for giving me that opportunity to be there and the community warriors, because we love what we do for Feed the Valley.
And I tell you, with the holiday seasons, it's always a difficult time, and there's always a great need. So I tell you, the, the givers usually get. So I'd urge you to find, whether it's Feed in the Valley or another organization, get involved in this year. Give back to those that might be hurting a little bit, so. Thank you.
Mayor, next on my agenda, I have Georgia Public Safety Officials and First Responders Supplement Grant Application.
Motion approved from Counsel Woodson, second from Counsel House. Any discussion? Hearing none, please register your votes.
Mayor, why are you doing that? For the sake of those listening, here are the eligible employees included. And we didn't decide this. This comes from the state. So, you know, we don't, it is what it is. But certified full-time employees who served as public safety officer or first responder during the month of August 2021 in a position which requires active certification as a law enforcement. law enforcement officer, correctional officer, juvenile correction officer, jail officer, probation officer, parole officer, communications officer, firefighter, or emergency medical services worker by the Georgia Peace Officer Standards and Training Council, that's post a Georgia Firefighter Standards and Training Council, or Department of Public Health. That's who can get this money. We didn't decide. Someone else did. It came from the state. We're applying to the state on behalf of our employees. We've already dealt with number five. Number six is annual unused sick leave payment to our employees.
Motion approved from Council Woodson. I heard a second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Hearing none, please register your votes.
Mayor and council, I've got one add-on that comes from the Sheriff's Office. It's an add-on grant, the State of Georgia Fiscal Year 2022 Law Enforcement Training Program Grant. And our Sheriff's Office is making the grant application.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Council Woodson. Any discussion? Since it's an add-on, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. It's approved.
They are applying for $52,000 or the amount awarded with no match. That deadline is December 1st this year, and that's why it's an add-on. And the grant can be used for use of force in de-escalation training, crisis intervention, team training, and training to support officer mental health. I've got purchases. The first purchase, item A, is asbestos abatement for the former Georgia State Farmers Market. It's an RFP, it's with W.T. Miller.
There's a motion from Council Huff to approve the purchases, items A through I, and a second from Council Tucker. Is there any item that anyone would like to have pulled for further discussion? All right, hearing none, all, please register your votes for all of the purchases. And Mr. City Manager, if you can continue.
Item B would be for the Tax Assessor's Office, two 2022 Ford Escape S compact SUVs. Item number C would be 12 zero-turn mowers for Public Works. D would be a contract amendment for NeoGov Application Management Tracking System for our HR department. Item E would be household garbage and yard waste cart services. And item F would be 12 Ford Explorer midsize SUVs for the Columbus Police Department. And item H would be 10 pursuit utility vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. And item I would be a contract extension for real estate appraisal services with Norris Appraisal. Those are the purchases. And I've got one update from our finance director, and it's a finance update. Angelica Alexander.
Good evening. Boy, I felt like I had to really rush out here. We're moving through the agenda so quickly.
Based on that last study we did, don't get used to it.
So the report tonight reflects the monthly financials as of the end of October. We were able to close out that month before this meeting, and so I wanted to make sure you all had the most current information as it relates to the financials for the city. So just starting with the right side of the snapshot in the general fund, the general fund is up 10.07%. That is largely due to the taxes again. The taxes were due sooner this year than they were last year, so we are seeing the impact of receiving that revenue a little sooner. Also, for the month of October, we've received our insurance premium tax revenue. That is a one-time allotment that we received from the state. That was up pretty significantly over last year as well. The budget for the insurance premium was right at 15 million, and we received 15.8 million this year. So also taking into consideration the one-time audit revenue, if we take that out of the equation for last year, the general fund would actually be up about 12%. Moving down the snapshot here for the other local option sales tax fund, it is showing a decrease here of 16.48%. Again, excluding the one-time audit revenue, that fund would be up 12% over last year. The Stormwater Sewer Fund is showing extraordinary increases here, and you'll see extraordinary increases again for those tax-supported funds. The Stormwater Fund being up of 119.83%. The Paving Fund is up over 108%. The Medical Center Fund, up 132, almost 133%. The Integrated Waste Fund is showing a decline of 25.11%. This is the first month where we're seeing the impact of the refund, well, the fee waiver that was provided for the residential collection fee. So sort of uphill battle at this point for the Integrated Waste Fund with it being, showing an increase at some point through the fiscal year. The Emergency Telephone Fund is down 1.65%. Economic Development Authority Fund is up 132%. Again, one of those tax-supported funds. Same with the Debt Service Fund being up 74.89%. The Transportation Fund receives an allocation in taxes. It is also showing an increase of 45.25%. The Trade Center Fund is up 84%. And that is largely due to event service revenue, catering revenue, all that revenue that they sort of missed out on in 2020. They're recapturing, you know, those funds. Hotel Motel, they receive hotel motel allocation as well, and that revenue is up about 66% over last year. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down 9.70%. Merchandise for redistribution is up. The snack bar revenue, that's up. It was actually closed at this point last year, so we didn't anticipate increases in the snack bar revenue for Bull Creek because they opened that back up. But the operation revenue is down a little bit right now. However, Oxbo Creek is up 14.66%. And the City Attorney's Fund, again, they're up over 500%. That is due to that grant that they received from the SBA. Moving down the snapshot, the other local option sales tax fund, the public safety summary, we've recorded to date about 7.6 million in revenue, have about 18.6 million obligated in our expenditures. For the infrastructure portion of the other local option sales tax fund, we've recorded about 3.2 million in revenue with about 2.1 million in expenditure obligations. If you move to the left side of the snapshot here, at this point in the fiscal year, the goal is to be either X or above 66%. The departments that are highlighted here are not quite at that goal. The Clerk of Counsel is still listed here, but this is tapering off. I anticipate there'll be no issue with this as we get further through and throughout the fiscal year. And this is at this particular point where it is because of the annual payments that we have to make at the beginning of the fiscal year. The City Attorney's Litigation is highlighted here. Information Technology, again, annual fees for software maintenance and agreements that we have to make at the very beginning of the fiscal year. Employee Benefits, that is due to our annual death benefit and major disability payments that we make in the month of August. The inspections and Code is highlighted here this month. That is due to purchases related to the budgeted capital outlay. There were some immediate needs that were needed in the department, so we, you know, made those purchases a little sooner in the fiscal year, obviously. No worries or concerns for me on that front. Engineering listed here because of the Motorola contract that we have for our radio maintenance. Again, this is one that will eventually fall off, taper off throughout the fiscal year. The Jury Manager is listed here, and that's relative to the jury summons, description fees, and the padded jury fees that the Jury Manager pays out to the jurors for their services. And lastly, here is the Public Defender's Office, and that is, that would always be on the list because we pay that contract a month in advance. That in a nutshell is the financial update for the month of October, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right, thank you.
So Mayor, just one announcement, and then that will conclude my agenda. The River Valley TIA Roundtable, there's, they're having public hearings for proposed regional transportation investment list. They did have one on Monday, November 15th, 5:30 PM at Randolph County Government Center. They're having one tonight at Preston Williams Center at Vienna Road, State of Montezuma, Georgia, I should just say. And then Thursday, November 18th, Thursday, November 18th, that's Thursday, November 18th at 5:30 at the Columbus Government Center Annex Building. That's 110th Street, across from Sonova's CB&amp;T there on 10th Street, Thursday, November 18th at 5:30 at Columbus Government Center Annex Building at 110th Street. There's a public hearing for the proposed regional transportation investment list. And so citizens need to know that there is a public hearing Thursday, November 18th at 5:30. That concludes my agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I know it's coming up quickly, but we need to maybe post that as a notice up on our CCGTV as well for the next day or so.
Yes.
All right, Council Woodson?
Thank you. City Manager, on this list, I don't know if you're able to answer it. It says lower Lumpkin Road Improvement. What is that? Is that the South Lumpkin Road? Or is that North Lumpkin Road? Is that just a portion of Lumpkin Road? It's, let's see, uno, dos, tres, cuatro, cinco.
That's in, that's in Quitman County. There's a Lumpkin Road in Quitman County.
Oh, it's in Quitman. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I didn't see the little Quitman County.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Council Huff?
You know, I started panicking, right?
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Thanks, sir. Council Huff?
Mr. City Manager, I got a call this morning about constituents splitting out sofas and mattresses and things of this nature. Are the sofas and mattresses things, are mattresses being picked up with regular garbage or is it coming on a different day?
That would be a different day. It's considered buck.
Okay.
Waste.
Okay.
And whatever day their buck waste would normally get picked up, it would be scheduled for that day. And of course, if they're behind schedule, they leave it out, and we'll get to it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. We'll move on to the Clerk's agenda. Hang on, we've got one more thing. Sandra, Council Crab?
Thank you. Can we get an update on the yard waste pickup? Because the last one we received, I thought they were maybe two weeks behind. But I'm seeing, I'm still seeing a lot of piles out there that have been there for over a month. And so can we get an update on that?
Yeah, we'll bring you an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
Which is December 12th, excuse me, 7th.
Okay. I'm hoping that, you know, now that the weather's changing, then maybe it'll give us an opportunity to catch up on it, but it just, it just doesn't seem like that was a, two weeks is not really what's happening in my area.
No, we're gonna do one, one is number seven.
All right. We good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. For the Clerk's agenda, I have two items of information. The first is the Medical Center Hospital Authority's Disclosure Report. The second is the Medical Center Hospital Authority's Community Benefit Report for the year ending June 30th, 2020, and a Report of Annual Activities Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2021. Item number three is a resolution to ratify the time for the December 7th council meeting to be held at 9 o'clock AM instead of 5:30 PM.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tem to approve. Is there a second? Second from Council House. Any discussion? You want to post it, Bruce? You want me to just do a voice vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We approve all items four and five.
All right, there's a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to approve the resolutions excluding Council Barnes and Council Garrett, and a second from Council House. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. They're approved.
Item number six is a letter from the Medical Center Hospital Authority. They're advising that the authority has selected Ms. Brenda DeRaimis, Dr. Susan McWhorter, and Mr. John Hargrove to serve another term of office, and for Ms. Afna Aurora to succeed Dr. Cross. They may be confirmed.
There's a motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Council Woodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. They're confirmed.
Item seven are minutes of various boards to be received.
Move the minute, move the minutes to receive from Council, from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Council House. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. They're received.
Next, I have an add-on resolution to excuse Council Thomas from today's meeting.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Council Woodson. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Next, I have board appointments. First, I have the mayor's appointment for the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, the seat of Jack Kingsman.
And I did not check with my nominee. I will confirm that she wants to move off the other board, and I'll let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the Board of Health. We have Dr. Joel Adaba was nominated to succeed Dr. Choakar. She may be confirmed.
Move confirmation by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Council House. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, for the Development Authority, Mr. Dallas Copeland was nominated to fill the non-expire term of the late Jackie Lowe.
Motion to approve from Council Crab, second from Council House. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Mr. Copeland is approved.
And next, for the Development Authority, Ms. Janice Granville was nominated.
All right, there's a motion to approve from Council Crab, second from Council Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointment. This nomination comes from the Commission. The Columbus Airport Commission has submitted its nominee of Donnell Marks for the seat of Ms. Tanner McHale, and she may be confirmed.
Motion from Council Crab, second from, I thought, Mayor Pro Tem to confirm. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Mastroene is confirmed.
Next, we have council district appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Recreation Advisory Board, the seat of James Wilkoff, this is the District Two nominee. And Council Huff is nominating Gregory, Reverend Gregory Blue, for the seat of Latisha Stevens Archibald.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Council House. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Animal Control Advisory Board, Council Crab is nominating Mr. Raymond Robbie Co. For the Animal Control Advisory Board, Counsel Crabbe is nominating Mr. Raymond Robbie Colpepper for the seat of Ms. Kristi Nulay. And we will bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Corporate Extension Advisory Board, Margaret Higdon, the seat is open for nominations. For the Personnel Review Board, we have the alternate seats of Tracy Walker, Darlene Small, and Dr. Shanita Peddaway. All are open for nominations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Before we adjourn, we want to wish Counsel Woodson a happy birthday. We won't, we won't have another meeting before she turns 39, so we'll... And, and also, Counsel, well, Counsel Huff?
Just wanted to request that we, as a body, get with the clerk and send Counsel Thomas, Counsel Garrett, a card, or anybody else that is trying to recover at this point, and wish them a happy Thanksgiving.
That's a good thought. Thank you, sir. All right, no other lights are on, but before we go, we do want to say that this community, like all communities, has a lot of challenge. It's been a rough year and a half, but we have so much to be grateful for. Thankful to be living in a city like Columbus. It is progressive, it works hard on its challenges and problems, but does not let that get in the way of the improvement and momentum that we continue to sustain. So from the consolidated government, to anybody who is watching and all those out in, in the city, we wish you a very happy Thanksgiving and hope you get to send it, spend it safely at home with your family and friends. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counsel House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.